Well, let's go ahead and get started. And if Councilman Allison is able to join us, he can join us a few minutes late. I'm so now called to order the Villan Town Council meeting for February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty three. If all who are able will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Dr. Jeff Stein.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States, to the Republic.
Start to note that in the minute, Stein. All right. Moving on, motion to approve by reference the items listed on the consent agenda. And our town clerk will read those items.
Level eight, February fourteen, two thousand and twenty three, Town Council meeting.
Any questions? Have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
We're moved.
Second, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving right along to our presentations. We will start with our downtown master plan presentation.
Give you a quick little little something, something. A little history. As you all know, we hired Benchmark to do a downtown master plan and back in October. And just to, just to remind you where we are at in the process, we've completed the first phase of the process, which constituted listening sessions, you all participated in those. Over a two day period, and we had other stakeholders involved in that, and was a really good couple of days that we did. In addition to that, we had a survey that went out to the public via all the social media, website, different way. And we had really great feedback on that, which still share. So they will be updating us on those items as well as they've been doing a lot of research and background on Elon and neighboring communities, the county. And they will give us a presentation that our downtown advisory board has already seen. It's a great presentation. They're going to kind of try to condense that there's a lot of information. You have the full presentation. If you want to look at any of those statistics, I think Jason's going to go and Dan as quickly through some of those items as they can. But they'll do a presentation, then of course we'll open it up for question and answer, which I'm sure you'll have plenty of. So I don't know who is up first, but
we have a
Jason and Dan from Benchmark.
Thank you. All right. Once again, I'm Jason Epley. This is Dan Douglas, and great to be back. And glad to be here to present the, at least the summary of what we've been learning over the past months. And I guess wait for it to come up. While we're waiting for it to come up, the first phase is doing the background assessment, which we're mostly complete. I think there's probably some additional things we're going to do that over the next month. And certainly after your feedback and any other feedback from your community, there may be some additional things. Second phase, moving into public input. And those meetings are set for the end of April, through the May. They're going to be at the community church in their life center, I believe it's called.
Community Life Center.
Life Center, there we go. And those meetings will be on the twenty fifth fourth and the eleventh. I think I put it right. They'll be on the PowerPoint in a minute.
It's the May, May fourth and May eleventh.
And so the purpose of those meetings would be to allow residents and business owners and other stakeholders and people to come, give us additional input into what we've, you know, things we've learned, give us insight into what they would like to see, for example, on the streetscape for Williamson Avenue. Want to grab my water. It's coming up. And then once the public input is complete, we'll move into preparing the actual draft document, master plan.
When were those hearings out while we're waiting?
Those are going to be from six thirty to eight thirty. Each night and the, it'll be a small presentation before each meeting, but the main focus will be for people to work in small groups. We'll have things for, you know, maps and other ways to get people involved. So it's not just we're not just going to give a presentation like we're going to do tonight for an hour, I think is what we have.
Thirty minutes tonight.
Is it going to work? Or do I need to do it through PowerPoint?
Can you send it? Do you make it fill up the whole screen?
Yes, yes.
Do you need the PowerPoint or the?
This is the PDF. Yeah, you could just make it.
Up along the black thing across the second from the right in the middle, I think.
Right here. I'm sorry, I can't see that way. So I'm trying.
I think that's full screen.
Take control, you weapon to do something.
You just, now you just, I think you just scroll it down now.
Just scroll it down?
Yeah. Yeah, that's perfect.
Is that going to work? We need to get rid of this stuff.
It'd be what? It's making fit the whole screen. Then one of those nights. That's all right.
Three years ago, I think. Bear with me. Whoever got that skill set, then maybe weapon to come over here and take over.
Is the downloaded, he's playing the website of the city.
The lift.
I'm getting out your iPhone.
I think it's a call in mag. It's set to open in Firefox and Chrome.
He's probably meeting with me. I'll text him if he's better come.
Did you just download it? Okay.
Definitely not like him.
Go to the explore files. If you download it, I can get to it. That's what he was open. I see it. I just gotta get to it.
It's been updated since.
Today's, today's twenty seven.
Yeah.
Well, is that the correct one?
We've updated it since that one, but I mean, I know it's the same day.
The one I sent you, Diane. Which was?
This too exists.
For doing that, can we go ahead and move on to the public comment section since that won't require anything while we wait? All right. So let's go ahead and just open it up for public comments. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to share any comments when their concerns are wasted. Now, each member, if they wish to speak, will please sign in on the sign sheet at the back of the room. Now have up to three minutes to share any comments. Are there any public comments in the room today?
Are we broadcasting?
We're broadcasting.
Okay. Um, are there any online? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public, public comment section. Rich, do you want to go ahead and provide us an update on the FY twenty three budget ordinance amendment number three?
Sure. Last year, we approved our budget. The worksheets I gave you showed the full Powellville revenue, even though we're only spending a very small portion of it. And in our description, I committed kind of about that excess revenue would be going into reserve account to be spent in the upcoming fiscal year. And it was pointed out by auditor that we needed to account for that revenue, actually show it as being made to put in the budget. So you have a budget amendment in front of you that actually takes the remainder of that Powellville revenue, puts it into the Powellville expense budget, even though we're not planning on expanding it in our fiscal year. The end of the year will automatically roll into the reserve account. It'll be available for us in July to do our payment projects. So it's a it really is just a technical correction to the budget to keep the auditors happy.
Any questions for Rich on that item?
In fact, we understood it, that you did a really good job.
So it took me a lot longer to understand than to explain it.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendment number three?
Make a motion. I'll take it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Action carries. You? All right, looks like we are good to go for our downtown master plan presentation.
That's one that you sent me at twelve.
Thank you for your patience. Hopefully, uh. Good work. There we go. Well, we've already gone through that. Uh, let's see. Next slide. Yes, this is a thing.
Yeah, it's working.
Oh, is it working? There we go.
Just a little, a little delay.
Our downtown study boundary that you see on the screen there, we've actually enlarged it just a little bit from the last study. You know, we come across the road tracks that take in, you know, town hall here, go a little bit further west, out Haggard. So it's a slightly larger study area than the last document. Next slide. There were two hundred and sixty nine responses to the survey. We're really pleased with that. It was over thirty one days. I would like to ninety two emails. So we've got that list as we have the public meetings, we can send that out. You know, obviously through all the channels the town has, but also through those emails. Next slide. So who took the survey? Next slide. We had fifty three percent. This was a check all that apply. So if you try to add those up, they're not going to equal a hundred percent. Yeah. So you've got fifty three percent of the people that said they live in the town, thirty five percent live in Alamance County. And like we talked about many, you know, there was hope that there would be some response from people that live outside of Elon that come here to try to get some input from that group of folks as well. And you see there was a few students who took the survey, not a whole lot. And then there were some people outside of, you know, Guilford, Burlington, Gibsonville area that also took the survey. Next slide. Respondents age, although you're a very, your median age for the community is very low. That's not reflected in the respondents age. You can see there the major group was thirty six to fifty. So, yeah, once again, that's reflective of students, you know, not taking the survey in masses. Next slide. What did they say? Next slide. Several times a week or more is how often the respondents that took the survey come downtown. Once a week, thirty one percent. I never go downtown, so there were three percent. It's I don't know why they took the survey, but hey, we're glad they did. Next slide. What are your reasons for visiting? No big surprise, dining out, entertainment was the number one, ninety percent. So almost a hundred percent of the people that took the survey said that's why they come down here. And you see other things, your church, maybe one person that lives here, you see how low a response that was. Others you see there, you know, gas station, farmer's market. Next slide. What is your favorite thing? Is this just kind of a word cloud? So these were some of the things, no big surprise, some of those words. These are the things that people love about coming to Elon, the restaurants, walking, the university, the town, just all those, you see the wonderful businesses listed there. Next slide. What is your least favorite thing? Parking. That's the number one thing everywhere, right? Every downtown, Dan, I work in, that's, that's it. Not enough restaurants.
Never has it not been number one, no matter where we work.
And, you know, least everything, orange traffic barriers, but we're glad to see that, I think, you know, some of them have been painted. I think that was before the survey went out. So so just some, some data to put in with what we're hearing from people, parking inventory, I believe there's five hundred and seventy seven spaces now. Next slide. Which is about a twenty four net gain, which is surprising because you lost a lot of spaces, you know, as you tried to, you know, yeah, during COVID, offer opportunities for people to have outdoor dining. A lot of those spaces were lost in that block there on Lebanon and Williamson. But as you can see, you know, still had a net gain, which is good. Next slide. Traffic. And at our committee meeting, the committee said, well, we're, we think we have some our, the staff said we have some updated numbers. So from two thousand, that fourteen thousand eighty average annual daily traffic count, seven thousand during two thousand. So that really shows you what happened during COVID. Traffic was cut in half coming through Elon. So it's back up. I don't know what it was prior to twenty twenty. We could certainly look that up. But there was definitely a dip in the traffic in two thousand, twenty twenty. It went from seven thousand to about fourteen thousand. Which was just taken, I guess, late last year. I don't remember the exact date. Next slide. What, what would make you visit downtown more often? So no big surprise, more places to eat, more festivals, more shopping, better parking, more consistent hours, better pedestrian environment, all these things that people like coming to downtown, they would like to see more of. Next slide. And the good news is there's more parking on the way. Just on Lebanon, you've got a lot of plans to continue expanding there. So that's going to add to your parking inventory. Next slide. The existing land use, you know, most, you know, your highest concentration is obviously on Lebanon and Williamson or your restaurants and things that people said they like to come downtown for. So it's very constrained. Part of this process is looking at other areas that that could potentially be expanded. Next slide. Crash statistics. So people talk about pedestrian issues and walking and things like that. And this is incredible news from twenty ten to twenty twenty one, there were only three pedestrian crashes. One is too many, granted, and five bicycle crashes, which again, one is too many. But frankly, I was very surprised it was that low. As many people walk throughout downtown and students and all the things, I'm surprised it was that low. That's a good thing. Let's see. Vehicular crash data, different story. You see those big red circles up there? And it's no surprise that Lebanon and Williamson Avenue here is where you're going to have, because there's there's so many weird turning movements and signal timings. And like I said, I was surprised to see that the pedestrian crashes were not higher, but the vehicular crashes definitely are in those areas. Thanks, Autumn.
You don't have numbers for the crashes, the car crashes, though.
We do. If you go back.
Didn't have it on the.
Yeah, if you go back, the size of the circle is representative of.
Oh, that's how you do it, the numbers?
Yeah, and we can give you the actual numbers. So like the bigger circle is, looks like from here, twenty to thirty.
Thirty is the biggest one, yeah.
I don't know how I read that. I think that was just a good guess. All right.
Next slide.
Yeah, no problem. Sidewalks, you have a pretty well connected sidewalk throughout downtown. There are gaps as you're starting to move west. Certainly the railroad crossing presents a lot of challenges. Dana, talk a little bit about that later. And crosswalks enhancements may help. Next slide. Any destinations you'd like to see downtown? Parks and green space or park and green space, outdoor amphitheater, food hall, library, coworking space, bars and restaurants, grocery store, drugstore, maybe some of those other things like that. Next slide. And the good news is, what's your overall perception of downtown? It's great. It's okay. But I want to point out something that's just amazing. Nobody said it was unsafe. Nobody said it needs improvement. Nobody said I don't care for downtown, and nobody says it's unattractive. I don't think we've had any downtowns we've worked with over the last five years where that was zero. Usually you're going to have somebody say, I hate downtown, or downtown's ugly, or I feel unsafe. So it's really amazing that nobody even, and these were boxes that people could check, and they decided to not check those. So I thought that was a great statistic to see. Next slide. Would you consider living downtown? And that question was a little bit more expansive. The question was if there was new, new housing and new products available downtown, would you live downtown? And most people said no, and their common response was, you know, I already have a home or I don't want to live in a dense environment, or I don't want to live around students. So that was the most common reason for saying no. Next slide. Should downtown be developed or expanded? And seventy eight percent said yes. And, you know, they mentioned, you know, the on several restaurants, bars. So you start to see the theme here coming out of the survey. Next slide. How easy or difficult is it to park? Although some people said it was easy, and some people said it was very easy, the majority of people think it's difficult. You know, well over fifty percent think it's difficult to park downtown. Exciting. Would you be willing to pay for parking? You know, part of our listening sessions, you know, some of the merchants said, oh, we, you know, we don't think there would be a problem with that, but we asked the survey anyway, people in the survey and see the response. Next slide. Of course, everybody's going to say that, right?
Say, is that a common response rate?
Most, most towns don't want to ask that question. It's like, do you want your taxes to be raised?
And where we do, the no is typically higher than seventy five percent. Right? Nobody wants to pay for parking.
Yeah, okay. But people, I mean, people will when you need to. I, I think that's something we need to explore some more. You know, you're moving to the process, but.
I mean, the goal of charging to park isn't to make money, to have vacant space, you know, where all those people that said it was difficult to park. If you charge a little bit, then there's more turnover, right? So empty spaces. So when they come downtown, they can find a spot maybe near where they want their end destination. And so the, the reason to charge for parking is to ease the difficulty of parking, not to make money.
Yeah, and certainly identifying areas, maybe where you don't charge for parking, you know, recharge for parking, demand, all those kinds of things that, you know, we're still kind of working through. How do you travel to get downtown? This is, once again, a check all that apply, a lot at a hundred percent. But regardless, forty percent of the people that took the survey said that I walk downtown. So, you know, that, once again, was a, was a pretty amazing. I did not expect to see that. I thought it might be fifteen percent. So, you know, obviously, most everybody drives, but to see the walking up at forty percent is kind of surprising. Next slide. What is your experience as a pedestrian? I think most people feel safe walking to downtown. They do, you know, are cautious crossing, especially, you know, like I mentioned before, Lebanon Williamson's very tricky there. Next slide. So we did ask the question because one of our tasks is to look at Williamson Avenue, streetscape. And everybody favored having more outdoor dining space, trees, lighting, safe crosswalks. Who would not want all those things, right? But it was, you know, overwhelmingly, people strongly like those ideas or like them. Next slide. You know, and although people want those things, we do have some constraints. Williamson Avenue is only sixty feet right away through there. So there's, there's some flexibility, and we've got some ideas, and we know people have talked about ideas. So we'll explore those in public workshops, looking at ways to take advantage of what you have, to have a, add those things that people would like to see, the outdoor dining and the trees, et cetera. Excellent. Preferences for public spaces, not a huge surprise. People would like to see a more defined farmer's market area, stage, you know, for events, shade, trees, you know, small, what was that last one? Yeah, vendor spaces, et cetera. Public art. Excellent. And the good news is you've got a public gathering space on the way that will be here soon. And there are a lot of opportunities to potentially look at activating that space on all sides. There's certainly a step in the right direction and gives, you know, kind of answers that question of people wanting to have that public space. Excellent.
Can I ask you a quick question? On the preferences for public spaces, were those ones that were already set up and you would fill it in? Or do the people actually fill in the blank themselves?
Those were predefined.
Defined, that's.
Right. And we did, now we did give the opportunity for people to say other and fill that in. Now, I don't know if I put that on the slide, but I can certainly provide that.
Thank you.
Vision for the next ten years. These are just some of the things that people wrote in response. These were open ended questions. You know, obviously more shops, restaurants, gathering spaces, all the kinds of things, you know, that people come to expect and want to experience. You know, downtown is a place to have an experience. Next slide. I think Dan's going to talk in a few minutes about some opportunity sites and some deep structure. Yeah, thank you.
So the infrastructure is pretty good and present all throughout downtown. Of course, it's also the oldest of all your infrastructures, typically where the town was started. And as you get out to the newer developments, it's of course newer. So there'll be, we understand there's some budgeted money to replace the, I think it's the sewer line on Williamson or the water line. I'm sorry. Next. You know, you're the high ground, right? So there's a forty foot change in elevation from the highest to the lowest. And you know, Williamson is more or less the highest part in downtown. But drains to the north and to the west. Most parking lots are attached to a stormwater system, and most drainage again flows to the north and to the west. Streetlights, the majority of pedestrian lights, the lower scaled ones are on Williamson and West Haggard. And there's a lot of, there is a, the further west you go, the bigger the gap gets, you know, between streetlights. So I think most of the area that people go, most of the time is well lit. Otherwise, this question about safety would have been a higher response because there's a direct correlation between lighting and safety. But I still think with a lot of student housing to the west, especially with young ladies, you know, there is an opportunity to improve lighting as you move west towards student areas to improve the perception of safety. You know, no, no ladies that I'm aware of like to walk on the street when it's dark at night. Thanks. So this is just a math equation here. The dark green is where the, the thing sitting on the land is less valuable than the land itself, right? So this is the way a sort of developer would do a first scan to see, you know, where can something be assembled? So the darkest green is, you know, probably parking lots, vacant land, things like that. And as you go up the lighter shades, that, that ratio gets closer and closer. So the green areas are where we would look at when we get the full development program from our market analyst. Let's just say, I don't know, maybe we have it, but I'm going to make these numbers up. Let's just say it says we can, we can support a hundred and fifty apartments and, I don't know, twenty thousand square feet of office. What we'll do is look on these sites and check with the property owners and see where can we assemble some sites? Where can they, what are some options for where that new demand can be placed in downtown? And it won't just be one option, you know, we'll give multiple options and we'll test it and vet it in the community at one of these public meetings to see how, how people feel. Next. So then if you do a little bit of that, which we did during the listening sessions, you know, so we asked property owners, you know, would you sell? Are you amenable to redevelopment? We asked the university with land that they own. Some of this is already programmed in their master plan, but others, so these sort of Uh but others, so these sort of narrow it down from that math equation to five or six um good sites um available in in downtown.
Like, unless I'm reading this wrong, looks like a lot more than that. Are are you counting all the green spaces as opportunities?
Yeah, there's a few more, but it's not all these will work. Because if you look at the last bullet, several of these sites, um we didn't get the university master plan until late. They were working on it, so some of these are gonna come off because the university has plans for them. Next, please. Uh, yeah, here. So here's the uh most updated um slide from the master plan where they talk about um some development they're looking at on um Lebanon, new office, you know, uh off-campus office facility for them. Um, a new plaza, we mentioned already on college. And then um some streetscape and then a pathway and park that sort of cuts through from Haggard to the student housing. I don't know the name of it, that's beyond there. On the diagonal. You can see it under the word city at university at M and master plan, that sort of cut through. Okay, next.
Uh, you wanna do these? Yeah, let's talk just real quick, because, you know, Jessica cannot be with us tonight, but just kind of hit some of those highlights. Next slide. Uh so our market analyst, uh she looked at several different geographies. Uh the first one is a kind of a made-up thing, which is called the tri-metro region. And basically, Jessica and her team were trying to figure out a way, you know, you're kind of spanning and influenced by three different metro areas. And so that's where they came up with this tri-metro region. So they pulled census data uh from all those regions as an area and then also Alavance County. So that's one. Uh, those are two regions, but the tri-metro region is one area that they looked at. Next slide. Uh and then drilling down closer, the dark green line line shows the market area. Uh and the study areas, you know, here in downtown, that gold area, but as you can see, the market area is a little bit larger. You know, than, you know, just right here in Elon. It actually goes out uh further. Next slide. Some of the statistics, uh so that tri- tri-metro region, once again, is looking out that broader geography. Uh the market area is that dark green line. As you you could see on that slide, you pretty much, the market area compares pretty, pretty reasonably well with the uh metro region. Uh next slide. Uh, population characteristics. As I mentioned earlier, you see the little bitty tiny birthday cake. Uh that's the study area, which is about uh twenty-one point eight or something like that. So your your uh median age is, you're very young as a community, as I mentioned earlier. Uh but if you look, if you look across the region, Alavance County and the market area, uh that's a little bit more on par with, you know, what you would expect, but your student population definitely influences uh both statistics. Next slide. Uh household characteristics, you see some of the similarities, uh you know, that we did on the previous slide. Uh because your population is so young and so heavily influenced by students, uh the income levels are a lot lower. Uh but as you see in the market area, Alavance County and the metro region, it's about them are about the same. Next slide. Housing characteristics, this is where you also see that big difference. If you look at the very bottom bar, that dark gray, I believe is sixty-one, you know, percent or so, uh is multifamily housing. And once again, that's a strong influence of the university, so no big surprise uh to see that. But you see how small uh the multifamily housing market is across the rest of the region, the market area, Alavance County and the the tri-metro. So it's definitely a bigger, bigger component of your housing characteristics here. Next slide.
Just a second.
Yeah, sure.
So only three point seven percent of housing in Elon is owner occupied?
In the, I can't see this.
Study area.
That's, that's the core. This is the uh from the census data and I'm not, Jessica's not here to explain the details of that.
Part of the one percent right here.
You can note of that.
So that's different than the market area, right? The market area is that bigger box that brought in the university. The study area is the ten blocks of downtown.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Right, so there isn't a lot of uh owner occupied housing, it's mostly student housing.
I'm a study area. We actually did a map. We didn't include it in this presentation, but we did a map of the owners, uh property owners, and you can definitely start to see that pattern. You know, you see families, you see LLCs, uh so it's not, you know, when you look at that data, it's not as shocking. But yeah, if you're thinking townwide, that would be a different number in the study area. So thanks, that's a great question. Alright, uh student housing trends, uh you see the top bar there is the, the uh uh, what's the market area? Now, the market area is the orange, the top bar is student housing. You can see the uh comparison of rents is just, you know, trending much higher for student housing. Uh and we found that out through, you know, rent. If you see the third bullet there, the average, you know, square foot student apartment rents for, you know, thirteen twenty-six per bed or
Three thirty-five.
Three thirty-five per foot, which is really incredible.
That's a very high number. Even, you know, with the other college towns we work at.
Yeah.
Well, it's really high. Thirteen hundred a ru- a bed is a, is a very high number. I think uh around NC State, it's about eight hundred, nine hundred.
So that's per person, not per resident.
Depends on how many people you could fit in.
Well, that's my point is, they may say they have three, but they have five.
Yeah, well, I, I, you know, we, we don't, there's no way we can suss out that uh information. But around um apart, around apartments around universities that aren't in single-family, right, that are convert, that aren't conversions, typically rent now by bed. And so you'll see a four-bedroom apartment that has a shared living and dining area. And then each bedroom will have its own bathroom and even a little counter for a microwave. So you don't have to know your roommates, right? You can just rent a room with three people you you don't know and you still have a room you can lock and it's semi-private. Um, that is sort of the trend where student housing um in multifamily buildings is going.
Next slide. Um, and what you see here, you know, if you look at that very bottom graph, uh the metro region is consistently reporting uh very similar. The market area and the tri-metro region, you know, that, you know, tracking pretty similarly across there as far as, you know, trend line. And that was market rate apartments, not looking at just, yeah, student housing. Next slide. The retail gap analysis, uh you may, you know, you have surplus here in the market area, that large green area. So there's not a lot of leakage. Uh, and your market's actually bringing in uh people from the whole region now. That doesn't necessarily translate to the study area, but if you remember that green boundary that was around Elon, the market area, that actually has a surplus, uh which is good to see and hopefully just needs benefits of that in town. A lot of your issues with not seeing more, you know, space uh and availability uh for, you know, retail spaces and those kind, even though there are some vacancies, there's not a lot. Next slide. Uh, retail trends, uh the bottom side, you can see where the market area and the tri-metro area kind of converged. Uh, you know, over the years with uh great trends. Next slide.
And just before we get off retail, um, you know, it's kind of a lot of uncertainty in the retail sort of space across the country because COVID has changed so many peoples. Um, you know, they got used to using Instacart and Amazon and all the other delivery uh services. And so it's gonna take, I think, a couple of years for the sort of retail market to figure out, same as the office market really, to figure out um what's the new normal. And I can tell you that as a country, we are way over retail. We have something like twelve square feet of retail for every person in the country and Europe has about three per person. And so, um, you know, you see a lot of these malls, at least in the Raleigh market that I'm in, are are not doing well. If you haven't been to the mall lately, a big regional mall, um, you know, they're about thirty percent vacant now. Uh, there's a lot of malls that are struggling and, and that's all part of this over-retailing and adjusting to the new normal.
Those annual numbers?
I, I.
Like, like, you know.
Is it, is it, is it?
Square foot, is that per year?
What's the number that it says?
Uh, uh, it was a per year for, and basically the trend.
Oh yeah, it's the higher number, yeah.
Twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two. So yeah, it's every each year.
Yeah. So it's a do- a little over a dollar fifty a square foot or something like that per month.
Right, okay.
Right around there.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, yeah, although your major office user here is obviously, you know, the university. Uh, but if you look at the market, uh the market area, which is that green line, there's been, you know, slightly under what you see across the tri-metro region, the rent uh for office uh in this uh market. Next slide. And hospitality, um, you know, basically, you know, you've got the, the one um university uh hotel, which obviously, you know, is pretty much filling the market. Hospitality here in the area and then all about the interstate certainly factor into that as well. So it's not really a uh a demand. I think the demand's being met, which is what Jessica concluded on, on that particular uh point. Um, so, well, you'll have the whole report, uh, you know, moving into the next few weeks as Jessica wraps up her report on the market. So you can actually see her full summary. Uh, just apologize for the quick highlights here.
And what we'll get from her, uh before we start looking at redevelopment opportunities, is like I mentioned, she will give us a list that says X number of apartments, X square feet of office, X square feet of retail, and maybe even break it out into X square feet of restaurant that that could be supported somewhere in this market. And we'll shift those around into different development schemes to show um the public what, what the options for those are.
This doesn't take into account any future development that we have already got planned, right?
No.
Alright, next slide. I believe Dan is gonna kind of finish it out.
Yeah, so um now I'm gonna summarize, we did two and a half days, a few phone calls as well, noon calls, listening sessions with this group of um stakeholders, you know, real estate developers, property owners, department heads here at the city, business owners, the advisory board, of course, we met with all of you, and then outside agencies, um, you know, and up in the university, others that are applicable. And so what I'm summarizing here is not what I said, it's what they said. Next, please. Um, we talked about Williamson Avenue a lot, that um COVID has demonstrated the strong market for outdoor dining. And people want to see that become permanent, generally speaking, um and business owners, we asked them and they generally, we, we said, well, to make that permanent, we're gonna have to remove some, some parking on Williamson. And they were um generally supportive of that. Um, I think only one person maybe in the group was a little bit um questioning. Out of maybe seven or eight, I think we had in here for that session. Um, so that's gonna require moving the parking in, so they were kind of okay with that as long as the trade-off is trees and cafes and more lighting, which is what everybody um wanted. And the new plaza we mentioned earlier is a good start at placemaking. It's um, it's gonna need some more businesses or events around it to make it active on a regular basis. Next, please. Uh, you know, I don't think you have a parking problem, right? I mean, but the way America works, if I can't park in front of where I want to go, whenever I want to go there, it's a problem. Um, your problem here, I think, really is the students taking the on-streets, but, you know, we heard in multiple listening sessions that students take the most convenient on-street parks as clo- closest to the university. They get a ticket and they don't care. Their, their parents are paying it or someone else is paying it, or I, I don't know, but, but they tend to take the best spaces. And that hurts the businesses where people are wanting to come down and park uh close. Um, and pu- employee parking behind buildings needs to be policed. Um, you know, they do, there are some lots that uh businesses and sometimes multiple businesses um manage for their employees and customers. And there, we heard complaints again about, you know, students coming in and taking those spaces and trying to um store their car there for a quick class and run back or, or, you know, whatever the case may be.
Okay, I stop you just for a second and ask very quickly. I might be asking it wrong, but you've talked about the number of spots and you've talked about where the parking is. But I didn't hear anybody's talk about parking to the uses that we have on, now. Is there enough parking for the uses that we have downtown?
Well, we're looking at that right now, uh and that's, you know, something we just didn't include it in the presentation. We've got some information on that. Uh that we've worked at from the last study and try to project. So now looking at the future uses, I think that's something if we look, you know, finish up and
Yeah.
Get the development program. I think that's something we'll look at, see what the future, make sure you have enough to meet the future demand.
Yeah, so that's an assumption that we have enough to meet the.
Or close to it. Close to it.
I just, I just didn't see any kind of like a work of the numbers on that, that's.
And we've got that, we just have not presented that yet.
Okay.
We've got some numbers.
Be interested to see that.
Yeah, we'll definitely, as we, you know, as we move ahead and mostly have some of the, some more input from the public workshops, I think we can Yeah.
Just piggybacking on that, I'm, I'm just trying to visualize five hundred seventy-seven parking spaces within the downtown area. And I'm just not, I mean, that's not including the church parking because that's for the.
I'm sure it does include it.
Yeah.
Every.
Just every parking space.
On-street, public, private, off-street.
Probably, okay. But I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And actually, so I have, we have prepared a uh a draft parking inventory. Uh, we'll be happy to get that out to you. Well, I think I, I had shared it with uh Jill. But there's something I haven't shared with the committee, you know, because we, we're kind of focusing on this, but we can make sure that you guys have it. Because that shows where the parking spaces are that we counted. It was at public, was it private? And, you know, was it gravel? Was it, you know, improved? Uh, so I'll make sure you get a copy of that.
And last bullet there, some of the restaurateurs, um, uh there is some areas where it's just one-hour parking and they were, uh, you know, I'm concerned that that's not enough time to eat. You know, to come in and have lunch and get back to your car before the time runs out.
And I don't know that I'm sold yet on paid parking, but I will say that at the Mayor's Association event a couple of weeks ago, the mayor of Holden Beach, now granted, that's a ris- resort vacation town, right? But it's still small. And when they first proposed paid parking, they were having, you know, constant issues with it. People said, no one will come to Holden Beach if you start to make people pay to park. And they were like, well, let's just try it out. They made over five hundred thousand dollars in year one.
Yeah.
And that's really just summer. Um, and I was just blown away by what type of revenue a town can see from paid parking. Again, I'm not sold yet.
Sure, fair enough.
But, I mean, when you talk about the need for parking, the need for a town hall, the need for a police department, need for maybe a future parking deck, things like it could be paid for a whole lot easier if you had paid.
You can, uh, but just caveat there, given the size of your town and the number of on-street spaces, it's gonna be nowhere near half a million dollars a year. I mean, you'd be lucky to get uh tw- twenty, twenty-five thousand a year, depending on how you price it.
It's the wise up.
Yeah, it sure does. It sure does. And we.
It's thirteen hundred dollars per bed, maybe we could.
Um, you know, we did it, uh, and when I, when I was the downtown guy in Raleigh, uh, you know, the mayor was telling everybody free parking is, you know, the key. And it took me about a year to convince him that it wasn't the key. And this is the way it uh it sort of works. People want to be able to think in their head when they leave their house, I might be able to find a spot very near to where I'm going. And so the way, as I mentioned earlier, the way you do that, and not every city does this, um, you keep raising the price of parking in the highest demand area till at any given time, there's one empty spot. And then you've hit the right number. Right? And so when someone leaves their house, they can come and park in front of wherever they're going. And so what, and we did a lot of surveys on this in Raleigh before we started paid parking downtown and on Hillsborough Street across from the university. And when you drill down on what the parking problem is, it's not, I can't find a space, it's, I can't find a space in the block I want to go to. I don't want to walk three blocks. And so we tried to solve that problem by raising the price of parking till at any given time, there was an empty uh per block and empty space. I think we're at a buck fifty an hour. And this is downtown Raleigh.
I mean, you know, and it, the business members and the fashion support meter parking, um, except for, you know, after six and on weekends. And, you know, I in downtown today, but I walked. And there was definitely no parking, you know, anywhere in sight. And I, I saw students pull in, get out of their car, grab their backpack and walk across the street to the university. So it's definitely an issue, you know, during the day. And, you know, my family frequents downtown in the evening for dinner and events. And I've never had a hard time finding parking. It's definitely during the day, like seven thirty AM, it kind of starts until right around five PM, for sure.
Yeah, and uh look, meters are a lot different now, too. I, I don't know, you know, you, you, it's, you, you don't need a quarter anymore. You can wave your phone or touch it with your card. You can call it from the meeting if it's running long and add time. There's, you know, it's the technology of parking has changed a whole lot. So you might only have to buy. My point being, um, maybe you only need to buy three meters, right? One for the block of Williamson, one maybe for the first. One for the block of Williamson, one maybe for the first block of Lebanon, and maybe for the second, I don't know. Um, but now it's not a, a pole at every single parking space. You share once amongst, uh, block face.
I guess my other question to that is, how does that really solve for the problem though, if they don't care about getting a ticket?
It doesn't, um, except for the, now you've put a price beside the ticket price, you've put another price on it.
Yeah.
It's the fine. Yeah. Hundred, fifty-dollar fine. Parking. Hmm.
With our, a current parking ticket is twenty-five dollars.
So, yeah.
Which is. Nothing.
I could change for some people. Would, I'd take notice, but.
Yeah. So it's tough with students, right? That's a specific group that's here for a specific time. And I'm sure in the summer there's parking everywhere. Nobody worries. Um, you know, so how do you manage that sort of peak eight o'clock rush as kids are coming to school and wanting to get the best spot they can? And if, if in fact, it's true that they're not worried, um, you know, about the fines, then.
I think some of them are. I mean, I know our parking enforcement officer has gotten calls from parents complaining about it, but.
So I.
Comparison to the number of tickets they write.
Right. So that, I mean, I think you're right. The only way to really make that more painful to discourage it is to raise that fine number. And then maybe the, um, less financially well-off students will start to walk or ride their bike or park somewhere else. And you can whittle down that demand that students have for close-in parking, but I don't think you're ever going to get rid of it. I mean, some students just don't care and they'll park and mom and dad will pay the ticket and that's the way it goes.
And it's just, it's not just students, but it's heavier on the students.
You might be able to, you know, so, so by, by charging a little bit to park and by raising, I'm not recommending this, but by raising the, the fine a little bit, you start to weed out those people that are more price conscious. That's my point. Ready? Next please. Um, you know, uh, one of the gentlemen said the university events are not always communicated. They get a big rush if they, you know, if you're a coffee shop or a restaurant and you only have one person in for the day working. You didn't know there was a big event and then all of a sudden you get hammered. And this was already corrected that, the, the guy that's in charge of events at university, I'm afraid I don't remember his name, but he sent out an email to all the people in the meeting saying, you know, this is where you sign up. And if you check it, you'll see all the events that are going on, you know, on campus. Um, there's a desire for more community events in downtown, a desire for the farmer's market, um, to expand a little bit. Uh, everybody loves the farmer's market. Um, and uh, is it possible that the university, I think this was a question, that the university could make its parking available on nights and weekends, maybe easing the crunch, but also having great signage that explains, you know, during business hours and during the school year, this is not open for the public. But at this time and this part of the season it is. Oh, was that you? Okay. Did I get, did I summarize it correctly? Good. Um, and now that, uh, at the time, the social district was just being approved and roll out. And now, now it is, I guess, was this the first, um, couple of weeks, I guess.
Yeah. Last week, yeah, we're just, just a weekend.
Wonderful. Alrighty, next please. Um. We heard this mostly from the students that there's very little for underage students to do off-campus. Um, there's lots of programmed activities on campus, but if you're off-campus, uh, we need some more options. Um, nothing in downtown for the little ones. Now we're talking about twelve and under, you know, uh, there's a feeling that there's nothing kids to do. Um, question was, you know, playground. And then, uh, the following on that was to expand the offerings at Slade Park, maybe add an amphitheater, skate park, be an extract, um, something else over there that might expand your options while you're at the park. Um, there's currently, uh, very little, there might be one vacancy downtown, actually. Um, so there's a need for more ground level retail space. We heard from a number of businesses that would like to be downtown, but cannot, cannot find a space to move to. Um, so that's a good problem to have. Um, there's high demand and a low supply, which makes downtown rents higher than they should be. I think that there's probably some truth, uh, in that, uh, they know they can get higher rents today, so they do. Um, an example, the Mediterranean deli, everybody loved, but it was, uh, you know, a lot of people felt it was too big for a restaurant to make the rent payments, you know, that it wasn't full all the time. And people were hopeful that the owner of that building would subdivide it into smaller food and beverage spaces and try not to have one, a big one to sort of bring choices. And then the students mentioned over and over, a small sort of pharmacy, um, downtown where you could get basically sundries and things that you can't get at a convenience store. Next. Um, yeah, this isn't me speaking, but, uh, that downtown had a week in one-sided brand quote, it's just seen as a place for students, unquote. Um, we need to create more opportunities for students and residents to interact and come together. Um, another potential destination, uh, there was talk in the past that we were going to follow up, but I don't know if we did. Um, about a new branch library in Elon, and you saw that come up a little bit in the, um, survey. Uh, so we are going to have to follow up with the county and see if that, we were told it was many years ago. And I don't know if they built a new one, but that is, uh, often a very popular destination in downtown. It has something for little ones, underage kids. And libraries are not places to check out books anymore. I mean, you do check out books, but they often have a coffee shop. And, um, we've, we've encountered some where you can check out tools like, uh, like renting a tool if you need a special, I don't know, wheel puller to fix your car or, and there's even some now that, um, check out musical instruments. So if you're like me and you're, you sign your son up for violin only to find out three lessons and he's not interested in the violin, but you rented it for six months, um, you know, it could be nice. Um, then some discussion about the, uh, Twin Lake senior community is always looking for things to do in downtown. And, and right now we don't offer a lot for them.
They come to all the cultural events.
Yeah, of course.
You know, at the university. So I think, I thank you.
We missed the plaza.
Oh. Uh, the plot, oh, the, uh, yes, that the, the, the one, uh, nice advance of your plaza being developed on, um, on college or university, uh, the plot, the existing one is the one in front of the communications building, uh, right across main there, right across Williamson. Um, it needs to be opened up for more activities. The theater there shows movies, but not enough. And it could be used for other activities that attract the students and residents together. Um, you know, people talked about, you know, comedy and, uh, you know, whatever, just some event that would m- m- mix the locals and the students together. That TV studio is amazing that they have right there on the ground. Be nice. Uh, as I mentioned, the oldest sewer and water is downtown. It's going to be replaced soon. It's budgeted for replacement in the next four years. Uh, the water tank is currently supplying, this is important, adequate pressure and flow to satisfy sprinkler requirements. You know, we do work in some small towns where that is a major issue and I'm glad you don't have that. And as I mentioned, downtown is the high ground, so everything's heading west and north. Next. Uh, there was a feeling that we need to strongly encourage other modes of travel through bike lanes, scooter rentals, uh, expanding the sidewalk network. And right now there are a lot of sections of highway and street that don't, that don't have sidewalks was the feeling. And that we would like to have wider sidewalks on Williamson and Lebanon. And the campus is so big and spread out that students drive actually from class to class, clogging the campus and roads at change over times. Is that true? We heard that more than once. Okay. Um, and then, uh, a lot of discussion about improving the crossing, um, and NCRR Williamson.
Um, you do know the student housing goes even well beyond the downtown.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, you're okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Um, so that crossing, um, you know, the good news is, uh, on another project we're working on with Clayton, that there's a new CEO of the North Carolina Railroad that is more amenable, um, to making improvements at their crossings for pedestrians and bicyclists. And, and they are, they have been instructed to be more willing to discuss things than they, than they have in the past. So we're, we're for sure going to try that. When we do the concepts for the new streetscape, we're going to bring it across the tracks and over to in front of here in the post office to make that feel more part of downtown, not separating, cutting everything at the tracks. And so that will give you ammunition to meet with the railroaders when, whenever you budget and agree that this is the streetscape we want. You know, to begin meeting with the railroad to say, you know, we really want this to go across the tracks in a way that's safe for pedestrians. Makes it clear for everybody. Right now you're basically walking in the road. There's no curb or anything. Next. Uh, we need new housing options for staff and faculty. Uh, right now we're told that most live in Burlington or outside of Elon. Uh, we need more affordable housing at thirteen hundred bucks a roommate. If you're a single mom with two kids, you can't afford it, right? Elon, if you wanted to. Um, so people are commuting, um, and there's a feeling that there was demand for age restricted, um, apartments, fifty-five plus, but maybe there's not that much interest. Um, student housing in the downtown core is limited. Um, most of it occurs sort of on the outskirts. Is it possible to develop more student housing in downtown and the cores, what, what a lot of people asked us? And it is, we think, maybe in a different form, but it's possible.
You mean like the, the, the building, um, on Haggard? You mean like that they would have retail on the first floor and then the student housing would be all?
Uh, that's one way to do it. Another way, um, that, um, across from NC State University, I worked on a project there many years ago. Um, Raleigh has a rule that says the first sixteen units of any housing project has, has zero parking, like what? None. So what we saw develop all around the front door of NC State University was sixteen unit buildings with no parking. They did seven of them in one year. And I thought, oh, this has got to be a problem for the neighborhood. All these kids really do have cars. They're just parking now in the nearby neighborhoods. And so I called Jeff Morrison, who is the downtown, I don't know what the title is. He's the, he, if Hillsborough Street was a downtown, he would be the downtown guy for Hillsborough Street. He's the, uh, bid director. And I asked him, um, are you seeing pressure in the neighborhoods from students, um, parking cars and causing problems? And he said, no, we have yet to have a complaint at all. Right? And the way this works is, um, sixteen units, right? It's four bedrooms in each unit. So that's sixty-eight kids, people living in one building with zero parking requirements. And surely not every student on this campus has brought a car. Um, and so this would be targeted to those folks who don't have a car, want to live close and want to be able to walk to everything. Um, and at thirteen hundred bucks a room, the numbers are for sure going to work, um, from a developer's perspective. I don't see how they wouldn't. Next please. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, four-story height limit, uh, you know, is, is that still a good thing? Um, out there in the marketplace, I'm sure you've seen in Greensboro or Winston or whatever city you've been in, the podium style, five plus one is the common mixed-use, um, development model. So that's one floor of concrete with five floors of wood, all apartments, uh, above the retail. That is, uh, sort of like a commodity now that, um, when you develop it, other people will buy it, you know, insurance companies, banks, all those things, it's pretty easily, um, traded. And it's the standard, um, you know, we must have in downtown Raleigh. Twenty of those things that have gone up in the last, uh, ten years podium style.
But you have to have a fire ability, right? You have to have the ability to get.
Well, that's why it's one plus five, because that's the length of a, a long, uh, the long ladder on a fire truck is seventy-five feet, uh, to the, to the floor level of the top unit. So if you, I don't know what Elon's fire truck is, but in Raleigh, we have one truck that's long enough. So you could put that ladder right at the window of that building was on fire and people couldn't come down the ladder. And that's the, also the breakpoint between the low-rise and the high-rise building code. Right? Um, so once you go above six floors, you have to add all kinds of extra, um, cost for a, a four-hour rated stairs or eight-hour, whatever they are. I'm not an architect, but it's, I'm told it adds about fifteen percent of the cost to an apartment building, once you go over six stories. And that's why you rarely see one that's eight or ten. You see them six or twelve, right? That, that middle part, uh, you don't see that often. We don't have any twelve-story apartment buildings in Raleigh. They're six or they're twenty. Um, we talked about the sidewalk network, um, signature public space that's welcome, provide opportunities for redevelopment and proximity to it. Um, and then to expand the pool of developers working in Elon, how do we get on other folks' radar is a good place to develop, uh, new projects? That's a question. Um, Elon, they're in the process of, uh, finalizing the campus plan. We did get a copy of it. They have plans to grow. I think it was roughly around a hundred students annually, um, in the out years. Uh, the university's been a big supporter of downtown, um, recognize its importance in off-campus student life. It's also interested in downtown becoming a sort of a year-round activity center that can attract staff and faculty to live, work and play nearby. Uh, the town gown relationship, we were told in these meetings is in a good place and better than it has been in recent years. So that's a good time. Um, the university supports the idea of a new streetscape redesign for both Williamson and Haggard's, Haggard avenues. Um, the Oak House has been a successful place for our under twenty-one students. So there is at least, um, one place that there can go and feel welcome if they're not, uh, over twenty-one. And the university is always willing to consider partnering on public projects that benefit, um, the community. They have done it in the past. They, I think, are partnering on the, uh, new plaza. So they are a good partner and they're actively exploring redevelopment, uh, on their parcel on West Lebanon. As we mentioned with, um, an office and an active, um, ground level uses, uh, just around the corner here. Um, you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, that's fine.
So the first workshop coming up is we'll present, uh, condensed version of what we just presented to you. Um, we'll start to look at the main concepts and the key issues as it relates to downtown and begin to show different scenarios for redevelopment based on the market. And we'll break out into small groups and then each group will report back, um, you know, to the full group. And this is a really, um, important technique. Um. So if you get, uh, let's say forty people and you have five tables of eight and they all do this sort of answer these questions independently, uh, tables as they report out, you start to see a consensus develop literally before your eyes. Cause each table sort of starts to repeat what the other ones have said. And so, you know, a lot of times we hear criticism planners do about this so-called black box that, you know, we, we went to the public meeting. We discussed some stuff and then they went away and came back with something we had no idea what it was. And so we don't do that. We do these public meetings in a way that they'll see where the, where the sort of consensus is before they leave the meeting that night. And when they come back, they'll see drawings that we made that responded to that consensus. So we try to make sure by the time the plan gets to you guys, that there's already a consensus developing in the public. On May fourth, we'll present the ideas. Um, usually we do some scenarios and then we try to get to what we call the preferred scenario, the one that people like the most. So they'll pick and choose a little bit from each one. And then we'll combine them into what we think is the preferred scenario. And we'll do that with the Williams, uh, Williamson Avenue Streetscape. We'll do several different options for how that might, uh, be redone and let the public and the business owners chew on it. And hopefully they can reach a consensus about which one they liked the most. And then the May third workshop is to present that preferred scenario, the refined concepts for Williamson and, and Lebanon, the, the development opportunities, and then to facilitate a group discussion to make sure we get confirmation that we're, you know, yeah, this is the right track for the majority of us. And then we'll bring it on, we'll, uh, write the actual document after that and then bring it through the formal approval process.
Now that, so what, what's the process determining the groups they're invited? Is it just you invite people?
Uh, everybody's welcome. Yes.
All right. So the key there is getting involved.
Yeah. So we have that list of ninety-six people that responded to the survey. We have a list of all the stakeholders that, who's that participated in the, um, listening session? And, uh, be on the website. I mean, we, we would hope that you would push it out in any way, you know, we're not here. So it's hard for us to get people, but at every meeting you're at, wherever you're doing talks or if you're out as council persons, um, you know, meeting in the public, um, we encourage you to, uh, print out one of these and hand it out and try to get everybody to come.
Do you want the same kind of makeup as you did with the survey? You want people who are outside of Elon to come too?
Sure. If they have an interest in downtown and they're willing to drive to the meetings. Yeah, absolutely. Um, we'd love to have some students.
Plenty of parking at nights.
Yeah. So we'd love to have, uh, groups of students involved. We'd love to have business, you know, the same groups, business owners, stakeholders, people who have a vested interest. And then the broader public, because what I like to say is downtown is everybody's second neighborhood. You know, you might have the neighborhood where you live and your, your neighbors and friends there, but you're always coming into town for the farmer's market and go out to dinner. So I like to think of downtowns as everybody's second neighborhood.
Why? This is my first interaction with you also. It's okay. I'd just like to ask a couple of quick questions. I see a couple of different forms of these kinds of developments taking place in a downtown. One of them is that more organic, uh, version, like if you go near, cause you get close to downtown Charlotte. There's like neighborhoods, then the houses are changed into restaurants. You know, like vegan restaurants in there, you know, and you got different shops and things like that. Um, and then the other one that I always experience and, and, and I've seen a little bit of that here is that you all would come up with this idea and then the developers come in. Is that you all would come up with this idea and then the developers come in and. Do what they want to anyway. Um, so I'm I I I'm. Trying to figure out what is the end product here? Is it really? Something that we would then be tasked to help develop? Or is it something that you just give ideas and then it's really light?
Well, uh, we'll give ideas and it's probably more likely the second option that you discuss. We won't. Label a house a future business, you know, we we don't typically do that, but we'll.
That's a good thing, since that's that caused a lot of trouble with another group.
Yeah, we won't do that. So we'll identify those sites, right, and then the program and then we'll. Test them, right? We'll test different ideas and then, yeah, it's up to the owner of those sites to assemble it and and either develop it themselves or. Or sell it to a developer. Um, and develop it, and then it's up to you. Um, you know, as the city council and the approving bodies in the planning commission to make sure that it fits. Your zoning code, your. Um, it's cultural aesthetic, your. How you want it to look, uh whatever uh you know, rules you apply during the normal um development process.
And we may make some recommendations that part of our scope.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, as far as the yeah, the property owners, you know, we met with some of those property owners of key properties as part of our. Listening sessions. And now that we've kind of done some analysis, our hope is to go back to some of those property owners. Prior to the public workshops to say, what do you think about this idea? What do you think about that idea? And if the property owners say, oh, we don't want our property shown on this.
Then it comes out.
We're not gonna mess with it. Uh, so our intent is to. Uh, take some of the, now that we've done some more research, go back to some of those property owners. Uh, with the market analysis with some ideas. And see what what ideas they had.
Yeah.
So that when we get to the public workshops. It's not like your last process where I think you had some wiping out of some buildings.
No, we don't do this.
Uh, our intent would be to talk to the property owners first to see if they're even interested in us exploring options.
Again, I'm not sure I'm I'm the only voice on this because I don't know, but. My experience so far is is that we have a lot of very obstinate.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I don't think they want to make a lot of changes. They're making good money. They're making thirteen hundred dollars a day.
We heard it.
So they really don't. So the idea of an organic uh little. Section of restaurants coming up in houses, in old houses. Ain't gonna happen here. Uh, they'd have to be really, really rich, organic people. So, um, you know, that's always a possibility, but uh. But. The other thing is, is that have you helped us really envision what a downtown will look like across the railroad tracks yet?
No, we haven't drawn anything yet. We're still, we're we're just wrapping up our sort of analysis and assessment phase, but we agree that it it probably should cross the track.
Okay.
And for sure, we'd want to make sure the streetscape does, because that will arm you. And you're.
You've only got it going down as far as summer bill, right? Or do you have it?
Uh, we haven't started yet, so I don't, you're gonna tell us where you think it should end. Um, it's not up to us. We'll do it in the public meetings and ask how far should it go? I mean, it should go at least to the vets, I think, past uh, you know. The next lot. Yeah. But it's also uh, it's also a function of cost, right? I mean, the longer you stretch that out. The more expensive that streetscape is gonna be.
Sure.
And so I'm sure we'll recommend phases.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. You, uh, who knows? Maybe you do come up with the money. You could do a really long. Stretch of it, uh, but I think our intent would be to try to focus in and that concept could then be carried out. As you have, you know, budget. Resources allow.
Yep. Yeah.
And and that's leveraging, you know, potential future investment. And, yeah, some areas of uh, and that's something that we'll look at too, is how you can make public investments. Uh, to help leverage, you know, more private investment.
When you talked about eh you want every downtown to be everyone's downtown, which really touched a part of me because I just, I feel like. You know, we we looked at age groups as far as when we were doing this study, we broke it down by age groups. But I'm just wondering whether that study and the workshops, whether we can have some socioeconomic diversity or diversity of. Folks that. Into downtown or would have an interest in coming. One of the things that I looked at when you were talking about. Ability to come downtown is that most people grow somewhat.
Yeah.
Public transportation is one thing that we're looking at as a town. Do you think that? Adding public transportation to downtown would make. I know this is a big question, so you might not be able to answer it, but where we might be able to have some more diversity coming into our downtown.
Well, it certainly helps, right? Um, for folks that that don't own a car, right now they don't have a way to get downtown at all. So um having public transportation for those folks would open it up. I think it's something like eight percent of households in the United States don't own a car. I know. You might find that unbelievable, but it's almost one in ten. And um, you know, right now, without public transportation, they have, other than Uber or getting a ride from a neighbor or friend, they have no, no way to get downtown.
And then just a follow-up, just from your experience, do you find things like a grocery store or a convenience store or something like that? Being a draw for a a different, because eh eh we have lovely restaurants, but there's a price point for everyone to be able to come to. Spend money on coffee. Do you find other things that that draw in a different socioeconomic background? Um, i.e. pharmacy or something where instead of going all the way to Target. They were able to come closer to downtown.
Yeah, I mean, the more the more retail options you have, the more needs will be filled, right? I mean, I'm gonna be honest. I think there's a grocery store about a mile or so that way, and is there one about a mile or so?
University, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you're you're, you know, you're not gonna get a grocery store.
No, I just meant a small.
Yeah.
Pharmacy type. Not bodega, because that's, you know.
Like a sundry shop, yeah.
Shop, yeah.
I mean, that what that maybe, what that mostly does, eh eh I would call that neighborhood service retail. It's meant for the people that live here. Because people are gonna have to drive by two or three pharmacies to come to this one, and we, Americans, we don't do that. You know, if I can go to the first one closest to my house, that's where I'm gonna do my. Most people, not all, but that's where I'm gonna do my grocery shop and my pharmacy and all those things, get my haircut, whatever it is. Um, and so, you know, this would be what we call neighborhood service retail. It's for the people that live here, uh, not for people coming in. But um, you know, we would encourage um. You know, whatever system you use to get people engaged in a public meeting to go, but you know, a little above and beyond the you normally do. Um, because this is a once every ten-year sort of downtown effort. And I do think and believe that downtown is everybody's second neighborhood. So whatever mailing list you have, whatever way you can get the word out. Um, sometimes talking to pastors. Um, it it helps in other communities, you know, making sure that everybody knows about it and can come and participate in it. Uh, participate in the creation of the plan for the new downtown. We. You know, we would encourage, but. Again, we don't live here, so we're not the guys that uh can, you know, talk to a neighbor or or, you know, talk to a pastor that that at our church to get the word out. So what?
Great ideas. Thank you so much.
I'll say, um. We we pushed them on getting those dates nailed down. They will be in the newsletter that's going out this next, this later this week. So everybody will see what those dates are for those downtown meetings. Um, assuming they read the newsletter. And and I, to your question, Randy. Part of it is incumbent upon us. To change our ordinances. To encourage. Plans come up with. That, that's our tool. Uh, you know, other than. Going and buying land and trying to do it ourselves. We use, we use our development codes. Uh, to either encourage what we want to see. Or discourage what we don't want to see.
Um, well, there's one more tool, and that's uh the public investment, right? So if you're, if you're gonna um redo Williamson Street. You know, with the new streetscape and outdoor cafes. That's an incentive for all the rest of the property in downtown that, look, as a town, we're we're making investments to keep this place vital and active in our community. I mean, we work in a lot of downtowns where. You know, the last investment was thirty, you know, thirty years ago, so it's hard to go out as a community and say, hey, private developers, come invest in our downtown, even though we're not gonna. Right? As as a community. So if you're investing um with the streetscape on Haggard or the streetscape on Williamson or new parking. Or what, you know, whatever it is that you're doing. Um, you know, it sends a signal in the community uh to the development community that you're in the game. And there's a lot of towns that that aren't, and um, you know, just go out there and ask people to invest and then don't. I worked with one town, give you one example. I worked with one town in the Triangle region who I won't name. They asked me to come out and help them think about their downtown. It's not much bigger than yours and hadn't seen investment in decades. Um, they had become primarily a bedroom community in Raleigh. And they built a new police station, a new library, and a new city hall, all out on the bypass. And then went out in the development community and said, what? And what they heard loud and clear was because you're not. Right? You you made three big investments on destinations that draw people. All three of those, and you put them not in downtown. So why should we? Right? So you gotta kind, it's kind of put your money where your mouth is sort of thing too, not just. Um, you know, the the code is one way, right? The plan is a, the plan provides guidance. The code provides directions and a floor below which you will not go. That's basically what a zoning code does. And then your investments. Can help to catalyze. You know, the development community. And one other thing we did, and maybe it would work here, I'm I'm going off scope again. Um, when I worked for this um Raleigh Visitors Bureau, the twelve small towns in the county that they all pay up. A one percent um tax on prepared meals. And of is seven percent tax on hotel rooms to support uh the visitor economy, you know, convention center, arena, those things. And um, they weren't feeling the love, right? Because all those big investments are in downtown Raleigh or in Raleigh, and they weren't feeling like they were getting a return for their. Their tax money. And so. We asked each town to identify what they thought were their two best hotel sites. And then I've identified eighteen hotel developers. This was twelve towns, eighteen developers. We brought them into the convention center. Then we did the hotel development dating game. And every fifteen minutes. The town made its pitch for why its site was the best one to one development group. I rang the bell and then they got up and switched and did it to another one. So developers really loved it because they got to get a sense of what's going on in all twelve towns at once. Without having to, you know, meet each one. And the town loved it because they got to pitch to eighteen developers in one day, and maybe. There's a way to do that, something like that here to try to get um some regional developers after the plan is adopted and have a a rollout for them that says. You know, here are sort of the investments we're gonna make. Here are sort of the market that um benchmark is under sort of discovered. Let us show you some potential, um, you know, sites and have you get interested in in um Elon.
Rich, I want you in mayor, I think that's a question. So what I think is really critical is the workshops.
Yeah.
And what I'm not really clear about is, you know, if you say, hey, why don't you come to a workshop? Is it important that you attend all three workshops? Or is it better that we have a different group for each workshop? Because there's gonna be some people who say, well. I'd like to come speak, but I don't know if I want to come three times, spend two hours.
Mm-hmm.
Participate. There may be some people who who have a vested interest that will do that. And that's good, but there may be other citizens. Would like to just come to. Just to listen to what's coming on. And not be obligated. So, yeah, I'd hate to think we have. Six groups, and then all of a sudden, the last one, we got two groups of. Of business owners. They're there. And that's gonna be the key. How how do you encourage and and recruit people? To participate in this process? Otherwise, we're just. We're back to where we were.
I think it's open to anybody, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's open, but I'm saying is, but eh we have to be clear about when we put this out there, there's three dates. What are we asking? Citizens and people who have interest. I had to do. I'll say, I mean, the way it's laid out is is they build on, you know.
Yeah.
The first one is a lot of discussion, a lot of ideas. The middle one is some refinement of those ideas, and last one is some recommendations based on the refinement of the original ideas.
Right, and we've never done that, so this is gonna be totally new to a lot of people.
And and.
How we communicate that's really gonna be.
Yeah. And it it. It's not incumbent on people to attend all three. Um. But certainly, eh people have the the. Those that have the greatest interest. Tend to come back. Because they want to see what happened to their ideas.
Yep.
Hey. I didn't even think about that aspect of that's really great. I'd really like to see that. Then they want to come back for the final one to really. Hammer home that that those kind of ideas. So. You know, I think it it. You want to see. A hand, some core of people who come to to all of them. And you'll have people floating in and out. From the first and third, get to the recommendations and skip the, you know, the concepts and. Um. Eh eh it. Ends to be a little bit of both.
Yes. Yeah, and we'll do two things to help with that. You know, one is each night. A little summary in case there are people that didn't make it to a previous meeting. Yeah, we're not spending a lot of time summarizing, uh, but we'll certainly have a little. Uh, you know, snippet of, you know, what we've done, and then we'll also post. Uh, information on the project website. So if you missed the first meeting. We'll have a way that. Somebody can go online and and although it's not the same, it's sitting in the room, talking about it, uh, they can at least look at what was presented and make comments online. Uh, so that way they can see, kind of keep up with it that way too, if they're, they miss a meeting or whatever.
Yeah, we try to be super respectful of people's time, you know, we we try not to waste any time. So we. Yeah, we come in, we do the presentation, we give the instruction of what the work is for that night, and and then we go through it real quick. If nobody wants to come to a meeting, eh you know, turn people off frankly, if they feel like you're you're wasting their time. So we're, we, you know, we've been in this game a lot, and so we, we try to be real. Specific about what we ask and real respectful about their time and so that they feel like when they leave, they really did make a. Attribution. And and I would say, when you come back, if they see their idea up there as part of the. Now they're really pumped to come back because now it's the plan is part theirs too, because, you know, that's my idea for that top lot or whatever, you know, whatever it was. Um, but yeah, typically the people that have uh cash in the game show up all three nights and neighborhood folks come um when they can. It's tough to compete um and with whatever's on TV.
They're not necessarily angry. Too. And that's, we've got a lot of people coming. They're angry, you know.
Yeah, so.
We don't want to do that, but on the other hand.
Yeah.
We've got to figure out a way to, okay, so please do.
And we have a system for.
And I was thinking, this is all, you just come to one of the others.
Well, and I guess you look at the latter two means. A lot of the students won't be here.
Yeah, so we love us.
So it'll. Their representation. Yeah, as great as you would have. Maybe.
And, yeah, that won't be, so if you see on this last slide here, you know, we'll have other opportunities for the public to provide input. You'll have another presentation at a work session. Uh, and we'll also have uh another public, general public meeting for people to come in and.
And of course, the formal approval process will be, you know, goes through another commission and everybody else will do a lot of ways to take a bite.
So the workshops won't be it. There'll still be time, people provide input after the workshops.
I think this is the move.
Yeah.
Any of this involvement then. Been a lot of money. I guess encouraging what we've gotten.
Yeah, I I am. I'm I'm pleased with the response.
When you guys presented that, it's like, wow, that's more than I thought we would get.
It's pretty good, yeah.
Very encouraging.
Pretty good. So I like to say that planning is the organization of hope, right? And it's not our hopes, it's the community's hope. So that the the more folks in the community that can come and tell us what their dreams for the future are. The better it is and the harder we can all work to try to make that um, you know, of fruition.
And I think it's incumbent. On us. You folks, staff. Up our uh consultants to to. What can we do to make people want to come?
Yeah.
You know, let let's set up, uh, we can do an ice cream social one night, uh, make your own pizzas. Have a. See, we get a bake sale going that can benefit the food pantry or. Things that would draw people there, activities for kids, so the parents can show up and. Hi, can't go, I'm, you know, I got my kids and. You know, put bring them out to the parking lot with sidewalk chalk, so the kids can draw their own downtown.
Well, for me, at the church, they have a top, yeah, I think you have the only top lot downtown right out back, you know, so.
There's that as well, yeah.
Your Thursday nights, so these are right after farmer's market. Uh, yeah, the last two are Thursday night. I believe the first one's a Tuesday. I remember, right?
Just look, and that's what I was trying to look at.
I think the twenty-fifth was a Tuesday.
The fourth, yeah, so that's Tuesday. We've done lots of creative things to try to get people engaged in public meetings. Um, you know, we've held them in bars to get young people involved, you know. We've held them in churches, gone to a church uh for folks that are, you know, don't come, and sometimes you gotta go to them. Um, you know, we've done a lot of. I don't know, so, you know, we've tried everything um. To get people engaged and keep them engaged over the long haul. This and uh, you know, what it normally comes down to is you'll have twenty or thirty people who have a stake, either as a business owner or property owner or a little field. A committee or commissioner or something, and they'll stay with you the whole way. And you just try to keep. The other folks engaged as best you can.
Okay, I mean, obviously, you're using a very big room. Um, for this, because you're using the community life center, so.
We can, you know, we could definitely house any of that. I'm not sure we could organize all, but we could. Get a little bit of that going, but we could.
Can we? Maybe take all of that back to the committee and have. Come up with some good ideas for how to bring more people to the.
Kind of plan, but just there are things that we can do that encourage people to come.
Think about it now, but it's time to do.
Yeah, and. All of us need to make sure that. You're communicating that as well.
I'll send you all the ad. I already have it.
Well, one thing um I used to do, um, I actually had cards made. But you could get an eight and a half by eleven and write the dates and times with a little description on the back, cut them into card size. And then when you go to a neighborhood meeting or an HOA meeting or something, just pass them out to people so. So that they have it, they can put it on their calendar. You know, I don't know about your family, but if it's not on our calendar, it doesn't exist. And so. I found that those little cards are helpful. Reminder to have people put it on their calendar. I found that those little cards are helpful reminder to have people put it on their calendar, because I think once it makes the calendar, you, you have a much better chance of getting them. To come to the meeting if, if they put all three of them on when you hand the card. Well, thank you.
So much, you do not need to stay, I'm sure you have a drive home, but you're welcome to. You get some, you know, Monday evening entertainment.
I think I'm gonna drive home.
Did all your homework.
Thank you. And thanks to the staff for putting, you know, it's not easy to put together all those listening sessions and everything, so.
To thank Jeff Stein for, with the university groups, that was no picnic, thank you. He was a great help on those groups.
Yeah, so.
Unable to get that without you, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
It's great that we had student in. Get that. So. Okay, moving on to our second presentation, the ARPA update in current evening.
Kathy?
That's me. First time in the rodeo, people.
He's coming up, just ask a real. But maybe it's just something that could be directed to the downtown committee. With the development of. Talking about retail and there are things down there, is that gonna play any kind of a role into this? Into our, our downtown development, since it's so close.
No, because, so part Northwest was part of the land development plan. So if you look at our land development plan, that was one of those target areas. But it's not considered downtown.
No, but I mean, it's so close to downtown, that's the only thing, it's on the other side, I, I just didn't know if it had anything kind of bearing.
It, it. I imagine, yes, it's bringing a lot of new people into town, live. So there's customers, it's bringing competition into town, which can up everybody's game. To get customers, uh to reach further out, it gives some synergy, gee, that place is full, I'm gonna go to that place.
It's gonna add a sidewalk, which means it's gonna be a little bit more of a pedestrian emphasis too.
So, so yeah, I mean, yes, it will affect downtown. In, in all sorts of ways.
Might help for retail rent to come down a little bit, because. You can go up there and have the same clientele, easier parking. You know, you might.
She'll put them in contact with Green Hawk, in fact, they came to one of the stakeholder interviews.
Oh, they did.
Um, even though they're out of the boundary, she felt like they would have an influence, so yes, they have met with Danages.
Oh, well, since I've been sworn in since last November, I've been trying to keep the town abreast on the ARC funds. And it has been a roller coaster ride, so, um, I told Rich, I said, we've been slow at the gate, out the gate, but we are in the race now. So, um, so just brief history. I had it presented, so the town was recipient of two ARC funds. The first one was uh from the state in a grant form, Ally Williams, Carmen and King applied for a grant for us. And uh we were awarded two point four million dollars, and this has been earmarked, it is being used for the East Haggard. Uh, East Haggard water line replacement. And of course, this is a reimbursement grant, we gotta put money up front, and then we get reimbursed for it, and they. Ally Williams, Carmen and King are the project managers. So also, the US Treasury sent us over three point eight million dollars that is currently sitting in a money market account. And I find it extremely ironic that I had to submit a report on these monies. Last April, but yet the uniform final rule guidance, compliance was not established until September of last year. So I chose the revenue replacement funds, which looked to me to be the easiest, because you know, I was just trying to. Helped out the finance director when they were hired. So, um, these monies have been earmarked for several projects. But I fear that we are not gonna meet the compliance guidelines and deadlines. Because everybody has received this money. And everybody is out there for every contractor that's in Alamance County, and if we don't spend these monies by a certain date, we have to repay them. And I don't want that to happen. So, um. The school of government has supplied uh local governments' policies and a roadmap. Um, most everything is from the school of government, and they are guiding each local municipality and town along this, um. Revenue replacement expenditure. Now, I am currently, by looking at the roadmap, I am currently on stage one. We do have to come up with the, um, the internal controls, which most of them have already been established. So the next point is, I have have to, um, I have to come up with the, um. The general compliance policies, and there's five of them. I have two of them ready tonight. And, um, the plan that I am proposing to go with. Um, the plan that I'm gonna go with, I hope you, it's a great plan, is I'm gonna reimburse the town. For payroll expenses and regular expenses from back of March of twenty twenty one. The US Treasury is going to allow us to do this. Um, we just have to define the project, I have different outlines for the projects. And then, um, we are able to dispense the money into our general fund. But before we can do that, we have to have the compliance guidance. In place, the five policies. One of them, like I said, will have to go to the lawyer for him to look at it, the other two is, um, something that I can do internally, and plus, like I said, the school of government, they've been very. Informative, they've given us outlines, because they know what the US Treasury is looking for, if. Five years after we expend all the money that they come in for an audit, so we need to have all this stuff into place, and also, we have to have it in place. For the grant monies that came from the state, the state says we have to have it in place, the US Treasury says we have to play, have it in place, so we better get it in place. Um, and so, uh, like I said, I have the two of the policies here tonight, and I'm working on the other three. The next report that I have to, um, submit to US Treasury is in April, and I'm planning to, by that time. Have our grant project ordinance updated, because I have to include these. This expenditure statement in it, and then we can go from there. And see where we, after that. So. Does anyone have any questions?
Immediately. You just said, I'm afraid we're not gonna be able to spend all the money.
No, I'm afraid we won't meet the deadline.
That's what I mean, so is this plan that you're working on? Gonna make that possible?
Oh, yeah, the dead, the final deadline to, to expend all the monies is twenty twenty six. This right here is twenty twenty three, and I'm seeing how slow, even within the town of Vlon. Stuff is getting done on projects, and. We could keep with the earmarked, I call it earmarked projects. But if we don't meet that twenty twenty six expenditure deadline, we have to write out the last check by twenty twenty six December. If we don't have that, meet that deadline, we have to pay it all back.
Correct, so, so the plan you're looking at is to do these eligible expenses. It may not be our earmarked stuff originally, in other words, our, the construction stuff we do, we might be. Getting that money for like past salaries, things like that, that we can, I, I'm trying to. I read this over, I'm just trying to get this figured out.
Um. The projects are steer, ill, earmarked, what I'm doing is cutting the strings. As basically I'm cutting the strings to the art money.
Yes.
Taking the money.
That makes a lot of sense.
Put it in and, in our general funds.
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed to hear, and now I got, I got it now, okay.
And, and, and.
Very smart.
So what we will be doing is. We've never, we've never notified the Treasury, these are the projects we've spent the money on, talked about them. We are gonna redefine for a report to the Treasury, what we're gonna spend those dollars on, and we're gonna document those expenditures going back in time.
And that's my, that's the April report I have to send in.
We will still have that money, we can still spend it on the projects you've already identified.
Correct, I, I'm getting.
Just outside of, outside of the ARPA.
Just wanted to make sure that's what I was here, so, that, that we are still gonna, with, under this new plan, we'll be able to meet those deadlines.
So we, yes, because we won't have those deadlines.
Because we won't be sitting on line behind all these contractors, it can't work till.
Right, right, and we don't have a lot of. In in the game too, I mean, we're competing against City of Burlington, City of Greensboro, I mean.
Ours are relatively small projects.
Yeah, are, yeah, comparatively.
That really helped.
Um, I will say that the League of Municipalities is highly recommending this process, especially for small towns, because. The amount of reporting for individual projects versus the revenue replacement is astronomical. And our staff likely would not have the bandwidth versus like a. You know, a Charlotte that got millions and millions and millions of dollars, where they can write off up to ten million. Of their ARPA funds, then all the others are gonna have to do the standard. Process, but they also have probably ten people just in their, maybe twenty five or more people in their finance department, that.
I, I just wanted to make sure I was hearing it right, and I did, and I am, so I'm very pleased, okay, thank you.
Thank you. That went easier than I thought.
So what can be from us?
Yeah, what do you mean? It's nothing.
Nothing.
We'll have two items later that we'll need you to vote on.
Oh, okay.
It was just to let you know what I was planning to do.
Okay, that's really good news.
Tell it five things, so the other two things, I guess, are kind of like. Record retention and civil rights compliance.
Right, and then, uh, another thing, there'll be three more policies.
Thank you, yes, thank you. You've been good for your first time.
Oh, thank you. Can we do the waves?
Moving on to new business, we have our multimodal transportation committee appointment.
Mayor, um, members of the council, um, I'd like to think again, I have the shortest item on the agenda, it'll be super short. Thank you. Um, so as you recall, at your September twenty sixth meeting, you appointed several individuals to the multimodal transportation committee. Um, since then, I have met with the consultant and the NCDOT rep. Um, and at that point, they told me we needed to add two more appointments, and they asked that, um, our local. Engineer from Division Seven or his or her designee be appointed, um, along with a representative from the Burlington Graham MPO. I reached out to Charles Chuck Edwards, um, with NCDOT, he is our, um. Division of Highways, um, engineer, and he agreed to be on the committee, and I also reached out with one, Adam Mallett, um, she's the MPO administrator with, uh. Burlington Graham MPO, and she also agreed, so at this time, I would ask that the, um, council consider employing those two individuals to the committee.
Great selections.
And get motions for Lori. Do we have a motion to approve the two appointment?
Move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And again, we are hoping to kick off our first committee meeting at the end of March, we haven't set that date yet, but, um, it will be on the town website calendar.
Well, that'd be assumed, what matter, we, like, some of these people like. Will you come here to?
Juanetta probably will come here, I'm hoping Chuck will come here, I haven't met Chuck, um, the consultants, consultants, I think, will be divided, um, I would ask the committee to try to participate in person.
Thank you. Right, and now we are to the two policies, so we have the record retention policy for ARP, PSL, FRF, that is.
We try not to say it all.
So, um, and these are the two policies that were mentioned, um, just now by Kathy, any questions specific to the records retention policy?
I would just, it's a little bit longer than our normal state level records retention rules, so it's a, a separate policy.
Questions? Do you have a motion to approve the records retention policy? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, moving on to the non-discrimination policy for the ARP funds. Any words or anything on that one?
Again, this is kind of language that has come from the Treasury through school government to us, um, and it's something that we require that we have on the, on. Records, the only question for you would be. An ordinance, okay, either way. So. You want to do it as ordinance, we'd have to bring it back, but I think it works, in any, in the case.
You consulted or that you just, this is a determination that you've made and you're, and you're good with it, or it might be something that we might have to change down the road if it's not, or something like that, or.
Can I interject here?
Yeah.
Um, again, this policy is directly from the school of government, so that's already been vetted. We currently have a non-discrimination policy, but we don't have a civil rights policy, so the US Treasury says they want the civil rights policy enacted. When Misty had signed off for this money to be received, Rich had signed off on a civil rights policy that was within the form. But this is a form, um, I think this is gonna be a pretty standard, I mean, pretty solid. Form, um, I don't think we'll have to come back at any point and. Uh, update it or change it.
Were you asked about policy versus ordinance?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I, I think policy is fine, uh, we haven't heard that it has to be an ordinance. So we, we've just gone, I mean, it's, I was here as a policy, is that? A fair statement?
I think it's a fair statement, but I have seen towns that adopted it as an ordinance, so I've seen. Um, I'm, I'm having a little hard to, trouble with ordinances and policies. The only thing this needs to be retrievable, ten years from now, someone's coming checking our records, they need to retrieve this policy, if it's a policy. If it's an ordinance, and they could just go to the code of ordinances, right, so if it's an ordinance, you can just go to the book.
I think that we have a goal of establishing a more formalized ordinance at some point down the line. With a group of individuals that are working on that, so I would hate to preempt that when we establish a committee to develop that.
That's why I brought this up, that's why I was wondering.
Yeah, I think this is specific to ARP funds, and that's what it needs to be.
I think policy just works just fine.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion now.
A second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, moving on to reports. Pitch, rap. Hey.
Sorry about that.
I'm hungry, so. Go down to Randy next.
I, I just want to reiterate for this meeting's sake that, uh, that the Sustainability Committee, um, which I've been assigned to, has started meeting, and. I'm very pleased about that, and I think that our first meeting was a very effective one. I hope that, uh, that will not only grow as a committee, but, uh, also be able to come up with some really good, uh. Good stuff to help push us forward in a green, green direction and, uh, helping the town. Some of those needs, and then, of course, I just want to say, uh, I think we won't be meeting again until the quilt show starts, so I'll just, once again, that. Uh, my hope is, is that we can, uh, work together to make the quilt show very successful, because we'll have a lot of people driving in, they'll be. Looking for a place to park, and we've got, we will be, um, setting aside a place to park on, in the parking lot. Um, but, uh, but there's also gonna be signs all over town, and I want to make sure that we have a. Good recourse with our, our local businesses and restaurants, so that we can, uh. It's easy for people to go have a meal or something like that. Those are the kind of things that I'm, I'm looking forward to and working.
I apologize for being late, I had a, had an issue that had to resolve, but, um, but I thought our meeting, uh, Friday was a, was a good meeting, uh, sorry, Thomas, you couldn't make it. Um, a lot of things we talked about.
Could have made it, I just.
We waited on you all day. Saying we cannot believe that Thomas is not here.
We had lunch set aside for you.
Really?
Shucks.
Shucks.
I'm not sure I would eat it. The presentation for downtown, a good presentation, I think it's, it's coming on us to make sure that we. We get participation, that I think as leaders, we have to encourage our neighbors or. Our business owners to, to take this, this important as anything we've ever done. Because there's a lot at stake for our future, so.
I'll reiterate too, with the downtown, I think this group is benchmarks on a really good job in getting out, getting information. I like the way they're handling it and not being overly pushy, and I think, uh, Dan made the comment tonight, hey, we want to make sure that, uh. We're not, uh, respectful of folks' time and that type of thing. we're not, uh, respectful folks' time and that type of thing. And I think when you're trying to get information out of people, that's very important. So I'm pleased with the process so far.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Everybody said everything I was going to say, but I do want to tell the department heads what a great job they did on Friday. I think it was very thorough as far as everything that you were looking at, very thoughtful. Um, and it was just easy to understand. And so we really appreciate everything that everybody spent time putting together.
Um, Quinn wasn't able to make it this evening. He had a work, um, obligation. Um, but let the record note that he's absent.
Yeah.
He likes to make a big deal out of that. Um, I don't really have anything either. So, hello to everybody else. Thanks, everyone. Um, everybody for being here.
I will say, our new, um, farmer's market, part-time person starting, a full-time person, part-time employee started today, Sarah.
Yes.
Bass. Bass. So she started today.
And we met her.
So, uh, she's gonna hit.
Does she work? She's working part-time, right? So are there certain days or how is it scheduled?
Yeah, so we're working on that. I think she's gonna be about like a ten to three and then that day she'll work different hours, but I'm being pretty flexible with her.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
There wasn't.
Adjourn, yes. Motion adjourn, meeting adjourned.